All right, folks, it is 7:03. My timepiece here. It's Monday, December 8th. This is a meeting of the Asheville Select Board, joined by members of the Finance Committee and the Tech Committee.
One recording device?
What kind of Select Board meeting is this?
So there are two audio recording devices and one video recording device. Yes, oh, God, we're short on recording devices. There's no doubt. But you still, you know, people are paying attention to the oddest things. Let's hope it's exciting. It's an exciting meeting. So I see the Tech Committee, you have a quorum. Do you want to call your meeting formally to order?
Yeah, I guess. The Tech Committee is beginning our meeting. What time did you say it was?
7:04.
7:04. Eat a quorum, I'll bust. The only person missing is Tom. He's a kid in Boston.
All right.
Do you have any recording devices you want to make?
No, I don't have any.
Your meeting was duly hosted, of course.
It was.
That's why you...
Notice the Finance Committee doesn't have a quorum.
Finance Committee is a bit under strength tonight. Unfortunately, one of our members is having an operation. Another one called in sick. Another one's not responding. So there are two of us alone. And should a third member show up, we will immediately call ourselves into order.
But I noticed from this perspective that the real horsepower is here, so that's...
You're flattering quite well. You say a horse is what?
All right. So our sole purpose tonight is to hear a presentation from Chris Lynch from Matrix, coming up with some ideas for the last mile broadband in Asheville. And just because I can, I'm going to kind of lay out what I'd like us to do, although it's a little bit smaller group than I thought it was going to be. But what I'd like is for Chris to come up and make his presentation. And I'd like for him to get through his presentation before we start asking a lot of questions and so forth. Quite often with these types of things, what I see is people are making the presentation and they get about a third into it and somebody's asking a question. All of a sudden, it's being answered in the last third. I appreciate everybody being here, but we don't have to drag this out and make a career out of it tonight. So I'm hoping that on Wednesday, pretty much everybody here is going to be able to make one of the meetings in Greenfield, where we're going to be talking about financing and so forth. I know we've all figured on being there. I'm figuring on the 6 o'clock. So go ahead.
I think that's great. Is it a good idea to clarify the distinction between Matrix and the Wednesday discussion and how that's a different topic?
Well, the topic on Wednesday is to figure out the financing or try to come up with some ideas on how that's going to work, and questions asked, as it has to do with the Wired West.
Right.
So that can be on the recording device. We don't have to leave anything to assumptions. Chris, pretty informal route tonight, so if you want a chair or whatever you want to do.
I'm not sure what would be best. Why don't I just stand up there?
If you're comfortable, let's do it.
You can have this part of the thing. Either stand or grab a chair over there. First off, let me thank you for all coming out. And secondly, I put together some packets of information, counting all of the information I want to discuss tonight. I brought 10 packets, so three for the Select Board, one for Mary. And I figured I'd give three to the Tech Committee and three to the PinCon. That work?
Sounds great.
Okay. Let me catch them out. If you want to look at them while I'm biking, I won't be offended. David, I'll give you the three for the third tech and three for the fourth. I thought maybe the best thing to do is talk about the options after the first.
Share.
Basically, the town has four options. The first option might not be obvious, but the first option is not to do anything. Because of the network that Chris has put up, you're not completely uncertain. You do have some network coming into town. And also, there's some things to be said about waiting and seeing what happens with Wired West if the money from NBI actually gets granted. Because none of those things are guaranteed. Also, we're in the process of building a network in Princeton. If you want to see how we perform, you know. Doing, waiting and seeing is an option. So we're, you know, on our end, we're not trying to pressure into any type of timetable or anything along those lines. The second option for the town would be to build it yourself. And there's a couple of different things that go into building it yourself. You would have the cost of building the network, which we would estimate to be about $2.8 million. And you would also have the make-ready work, the police details. You'd have to hire a project manager. You'd have the cost of a bond console. And you'd also have the cost of the bond itself. So you'd probably be looking in the neighborhood at about $3.6 million, $4 million total for the town to build a network. And that would be a GPON network, which is the same type of network that Wired West is proposing. And GPON stands for Gigabit Passive Optical Network. Now, one of the things that should be pointed out when building it yourself and paying it with tax dollars, every single person who's a taxpayer in town would have to get fiber through their house. You have to get what's called an OMT, an optical network terminal. Those are pretty expensive pieces of equipment. You're looking at about $1,000, $1,500 per house to run that equipment. So even if people are not taking service, you'd be still providing equipment for them. To give you an example, the town of Leverett, which we're also building, they had about 98% of the people in town sign the form to get the OMT on their house because you have to sign the right of entry. But the take rate for the service might be about 80%. So there's that delta of about 18% who are getting equipment but not getting service. So there's some expense there that kind of goes to waste. The second option would be the Wired West plan. And I think you've all seen it. The thing with the Wired West plan is they've given them a range, I think between $2.2 and $3.1 million. Now, you have to understand where that range is coming from. NBI hired us consulting firms. The first number of $100 million to build up the entire network came from Wired West and we actually helped them with that number. The second number is through a consultant from Wired West. It was the 119. But the number that you don't see, there was another consulting firm that did a total of $109 million. The $119 million was by a consulting firm that basically said, if every individual town built it themselves and then you collectively put them together, what would be the cost? So when you see the $3.1 million there on Wired West, that would be the cost if you built it completely by yourself. That's their estimate. And that's after the grant from NBI. So if you do it by road miles, if you do it by poles, you know, the town shouldn't be eligible for about $1 million worth of funding from the state. So to take the $3.1 and $1 million, they're really saying about $1.1 million, which would be in line with what we would estimate the cost. Now, the thing with the NBI plan as well is the numbers that were shown were all based upon participation by all 44 towns. And I think anybody who was in those rooms knew that there's no way that all 44 towns are going to participate. You have towns like Princeton who's going to do it themselves. Alford, Washington, they're going to do it themselves. Towns of Stockbridge, Langsborough and Hinsdale, they have to talk to Charter slash Comcast to find out what their plans are for updating their analog head end. So they're not in a position to do anything until that's figured out. Then you have towns like Peterson and six other towns who are not members of Wired West and who are also not MLPs. So you've gone through the MLP process. It takes about two years. It's a very big leap of faith to think that they'll join Wired West, become an MLP, and then pass a general bond offering to be part of the 44 towns. And I've actually talked to a couple of those towns and they don't want any part of that. So that leaves the 31 towns. When you talk to people from NBI and ask them, okay, what's the critical mass for them to be able to build a network and for the Wired West plan to be financially viable? They don't know the answer to that. So these are the type of questions that are kind of unknowns. Also, with the Wired West plan, similar to the town building it, if the town is asking for the general bond offering, you have to use the worst-case scenario. So you're going to have to say, okay, if the person asks, is this going to increase my taxes? And if so, by how much? You're going to have to use the worst case. So if you're responsible for the entire bond, that's what it's going to cost you. That's what's going to raise your taxes. Also, because of the taxpayers who would be paying for this, you'd be in the same scenario as you'd be if you were building yourself. Everybody that you're providing, if you provide an OMT in one house, you're going to have to provide it in all the houses. So there's going to be, again, that extra delta of people who are going to be getting OMTs and fiber through the house who aren't going to be taking service. There's a little bit of waste there. So I just wanted to set the stage as far as what the options are and then people look at what we're proposing and what the value is. Okay? So basically, what we're offering the town is we would come in and build a fiber network. We would design the network. We would build the network. And we would own the network for a period of 20 years. At the end of 20 years, we could either renew a relationship with the town or the town would have the option to buy the network from us for a dollar, which is a difference than on the Wired West plan where the network would always be owned by the cooperative in the town whenever actually got an asset. It would have an interest in the cooperative, but physically no asset. What we'd be asking from the town is really three things. For the town to pay for the right-of-way and the make-ready, pay for the police details during the make-ready process, and also a telecom shelter. And that's really in a nutshell what we're, you know, what the plan is.
What was that last thing you said I didn't hear?
Pay for a telecom shelter or replace the house with electronics. It could be in town hall. Place just has to be both secure and have clean power. Those are the two things. You can either build a new shelter for it or you can put it in an existing structure. And it costs us wherever the town feels comfortable. The big thing for us is not having to buy any property in the house, any electronics or equipment. We're not in those conditions. So if we go through some of the specifics as far as the general conditions are concerned, again, this would be a GPON network as opposed to an active ethernet network. An active ethernet network for a town of this size and this spread out would be not cost-effective. Pretty much all the plans that we look at are going to be GPON. Wired West is looking at GPON. Verizon 5 uses GPON. 182 Universal is GPON. Pretty much everybody's going with GPON.
What's GPON again?
It's a Gigabit Passive Optical Network.
And the significance is that with GPON, is it that you've got power and devices on the roads that need to be used for splitters and stuff? Is that what it is?
The difference is that with an active ethernet network, every single residence would be getting their own strand of fiber. Whereas a GPON network, those neighborhoods would be sharing the fiber and sharing the bandwidth. So right now, the limits on a GPON neighborhood are 2.5 gigavits down and 1.25 gigavits up. The next generation is 10 gigavits and 5 gigavits.
Do you have to replay? So I'm asking you no questions.
No, it's okay. It's good. I don't want to confuse people with terms. But the thing to understand is that most of the equipment is all field operatable. You know, it's mostly software stats. So the equipment you'd be putting in would be fine. It's also important to understand that the choke point for a town like this is not so much the equipment that's going to the house. The two choke points are what the person's using in the house, which is normally like a 50 or 100 switch. Right? So that's the most that they'll be able to handle inside the house anyways. And also, the amount of bandwidth to the internet on the back end. So the town of Leverett, they're sharing 1 gigabit right now amongst 800 houses. So even though they, you know, have the capability of doing, you know, 100 megavits to the house, 100 gigavits to the house, they only have 1 gigabit to share amongst everybody. And the amount of bandwidth that we recommend would depend upon the number of users and so forth. Be using in certain standards to make sure that people have enough available bandwidth. So the second thing we'd be asking for is the rights-of-way, putting the utility pole make-ready. We are proposing this based upon utilizing existing infrastructure. So distant poles, we're not proposing building any new poles. We have a known design, so we don't know where there might be gaps that might require new poles. As part of the make-ready process, the utility companies, Verizon and National Grid, will identify poles that they think need to be replaced. You know, so always in the make-ready process, there's poles, distant poles that have to be put in. Or the poles that are not the right height or weight.
And would those be at our expense?
That would be part of the make-ready process. It's correct.
But would you coordinate the make-ready process?
Yes, yes. We would coordinate as far as like putting in the pole applications. And the pole applications for Verizon are, it costs $2,500 per application and is a maximum of 200 poles. And the same is true of National Grid. If there's any parts of town that use Womika, they do 200 poles per application, but the cost for an application is $10,000. Okay? Now, the pole application process is very expensive. And what that basically does is they clean up the pole. They make sure this, it's called a pole attachment application. So they're making the pole ready for us to attach our fiber. And it basically helps it.
So the $10,000 is for what?
For an application, for a piece of thing.
And so much a pole?
No, it's one application, you can do 200 poles on it.
So we're paying them to do the maintenance work that they should be doing all on themselves.
I will not state anything about that. It's going to be recorded.
But in particular, because we typically only have telephone and electric, there's huge amounts of space on there. So they often won't even have to do any adjustments or anything. They just go and they look at the pole and they say...
Thanks for the time, Chris. Yeah, the key to minimizing the amount that you're paying for make-ready is not dealing with people in suits to the rooms. You're dealing with the people in the field at the pole. So, you know, part of our process is we go out there with the representative from Verizon, with the guy from National Grid. We take a look at the pole and say, this one's fine. Or this one has a problem. Is that going to be your problem or their problem? Or do you want us to take care of it? By doing it that way, you're able to minimize a lot of the poles where the guy in suit back in, you know, back in the office might say, well, let's just try to get a new pole there. We ask for police details during the make-ready process. We cannot ask for police details from the town during construction because the town cannot borrow money to help subsidize a private entity. So you could ask for that money from a third party like NBI, but you cannot owe your taxpayers. So we've built that into our cost that we had to pay for the police details. I'm not sure how the town handles police details. Some towns use one cruiser per truck location. Others use one neither. And the definition of, you know, what roads need to have details versus roads that don't need details, again, that's really a local jurisdiction question. There's no way for us to really judge it.
My guess is that our policy may have something to do with who's paying it.
Yes, yes. To give you some rough estimates, though, the town has about 84 miles of road. There's a lot of stretches of road where there's either no poles or no houses. We're not sure the exact number of road miles that we'd be working off of. But the town of Princeton has 82 miles of road. And they just passed a town resolution to fund the make-ready work and all the associated costs. When you add in the police details for construction, the pole applications, the make-ready work, the insurances that they want for their RMI, it was like $1 million and they added a 20% contingency to that, so $1.2 million. But they have about 1,240 homes versus 741. But that gives you a rough estimate as far as...
They have how many homes?
About 1,240 homes. Then the third thing, like I said, would be the telecom shelter or maybe shelters, depending upon how it's designed. It might be best to serve from more than one location.
Before you move off the make-ready for the poles, who owns replacing the actual pole? I understand the application.
That actually is an excellent question. Most poles have what's called joint ownership, where it's owned jointly by the telephone company and the electric utility. So it'd be Verizon and National Grid. And that brings into question two different things, too. When you put something on the pole, you end up paying rent. All right? Normally, the rent for each pole is around $9 per year. And it's divided normally up 450 for the electric company and 450 for the telephone company. So it's something that's, that's another expense that needs to be budgeted. The next question that always gets brought up is, all right, what happens if the pole goes down? You know, somebody slides into a pole with a truck. Even if we're the first people on site, we're not allowed to touch that pole until A, the electric company fixes it. They have priority over any pole. And then B, after Verizon is able to do what they want to do. And then we're able to fix it. The good news, though, is the fiber's one of the strongest things that's on the pole. So a lot of times, things that will take out the power and the telephone won't touch the fiber. But we'd be responsible for making sure the fiber is back and working order. Verizon and National Grid would be physically responsible for the pole.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
And also, as far as like the telecom shelter, this was called outdoor cabinets. I'm sure you've seen these green boxes that Verizon has. Sometimes those are the best things to use, too, and they're least costly. So we would pay for...
They're the most cost-effective.
Most cost-effective. Did I say least? Yeah, okay. I apologize. With those, we probably only ask that it would be a place of town land and maybe a concrete footwork to go on top of it. And maybe a fence, just to make sure that it's not like with your fire. As far as the cost is concerned, so the consumer would be asking for a $500 signup fee. This $500 signup fee includes $200 that would be going toward police details during construction. So if you were able to get the funds for the police details during construction, say from NBI, we'd be able to reduce the signup fee from $500 to $300. And this $300 is really in place for a couple of reasons. One, it costs a lot of money to install equipment at the house. So this gives the consumer some skin in the game. Also helps to fray both the engineering costs that we, that will be imperative and also some part of the equipment costs. It doesn't come close to covering the entire cost. We figure over the course of the 20 years, we'd be able to, you know, not only pay for it, but it's a big profit.
So this $500, the pre-subscription charge, that's an installation cost? Or is this something that you're suggesting in your proposal that people put up that then gets paid towards their subscriptions once they have the service or what?
It would be an installation charge. And the way that we'd normally handle it is the make-ready process normally takes about six months. It's the longest. It takes longer to do the pole application process than it would be for us to install the entire. Just the way it is. We don't want to be in a situation where we're asking the consumers for any money and then having them wait a year. You know, because that's frustrating for everybody. So what we plan to do is during the make-ready process, we'd be finalizing the design. We'd also be able to go up to people's houses. If there's any issues with installing something at their house that requires an extra charge on their end, we'd be able to let them know before they sign up for the service. So we want to do the three-month signup window near the end of the make-ready process so that they would only have to be waiting three to four months before the service is turned up for them. Makes sense?
Not entirely. What do you mean when you say, in this case, if they have skin in the game, if we're paying a certain amount of money to build a network, which you own and you operate? So what risk is there, a concern does the consumer have to sign up or not? Why do they need skin in the game in this case?
Because if I offer you, do you want a free OMT? What's your answer going to be? It's going to be yes. You know, and then you are in a position of taking service and not taking service. But if you say, you know, do you want service? It's going to cost you $500 to sign up, then you're absolutely not going to do this unless you want service.
And you're saying it's about $1,000 per house for equipment?
Yeah, it's between $1,000 and $1,500.
So you're proposing that you're only going to put OMTs into homes that have paid up to $500, unlike, say, the Wired West proposal, which wants to put OMTs on everybody's house that signs the waiver?
Correct.
Is any of this negotiable if we want to work with you? That we would...
Yeah, it is negotiable. And one of the things that we're asking is for us to install an OMT at a person's house, normally the utility standard is 300 feet from the curb via area. So if there's poles that you can reach a person's house 300 feet from the curb, then it shouldn't be a problem installing to the house. And as far as we're concerned, if it's 300 or 350, that's okay with us. You know, as long as we're able to get the service to the house we're happy. Because the more people sign up for service, the better off everybody is. If there's existing conduit, if the person has served underground and there's this existing conduit that we can use, that's not a problem either. But we're not going to be paying to install a conduit at a person's house. That's an expense the homeowner would have. That's going to be their conduit. They're going to own that, so they're going to be responsible for, you know, for that charge. That's what I meant earlier as far as checking out their house to make sure that there's no problems as far as installation is concerned.
The only point I'd like to make, Chris, is... I want to make sure we're hearing each other. I hear you saying one thing, the more that we can sign up. But the key is really, what you want to say, I think, is the more paying customers that can sign up and we can get equipment into them.
Yes. Well, I also want to make a distinction. There's going to be some special cases where a person wants to sign up and pay the pre-subscription fee. But they went to try and sell their house or they might be under contract with somebody for two years, but they want to get the fiber in the house as the trucks are going down the street, so don't have to pay extra later on. If that person has a situation like that, we're willing to work with them. So there's really free pieces that go into the final bill that goes to the customer. There's a piece that we're building as far as being able to, you know, basically mortgage the cost of the construction over 20 years. So we want to make sure that we're able to get that part back, which would be about $30. So a person who has an empty house, they want fiber on it because it makes it easier to sell, they'll pay the installation fee and then be paying that $30 a month fee until somebody moves in and starts using the service. Right? The second fee that's there is the cost to operate the network. Right? The salaries, the trucks, the insurances, the whole nine years that go into basically operating the company. And the third fee is the actual services themselves. And that would be dependent upon whether you're getting internet, whether you're getting internet and phone, that those kind of things. Now, if somebody signed up for service after the signup period, there would be a $1,500 charge to send somebody out to connect them to the fiber that's in the road.
As opposed to $500.
As opposed to $500. So if there's a...
That's what you mean by skin in the game. I get it.
So if there's a new house that's built or something along those lines, you know, somebody was an absentee landlord or whatever, and two years from now, the new people buy the house, they want services, a $1,500 charge. And that, again, doesn't really cost the cost to us to roll the truck, send the crew out there, put in the equipment and all that. But it's, you know, it's a fee that we have to put a price on so that you know, you know, what the cost would be, you know, both now and in the future. We'd also be asking for a 24-month period. And again, we're kind of, the big question people always ask is, well, what if I sell my house during this 24 months? We don't care. You know? We're under the assumption that the people who move in are going to be banned anyways. Right? And if they move in, it was already an OMT in the house. We're not going to charge them a $1,500 fee to set them up. We're just going to answer this one. Like I mentioned, the billing would actually consist of like three main charges. The construction fee, the operation fee, and the service fees. The construction fee, the operation fee, and the service fees.
So are you saying that Matrix would also be the ISP?
Yes.
Are you an ISP already?
We set up the EC Fiber Network up in Vermont. We basically put everything together, and then some of our employees are now over at ValleyNet, running that. We also work as a service provider for dozens of enterprise customers. You know, we're, you know, we've got Cisco locations where they've had like thousands of enterprise users where they're the service provider. And also, our founders actually came from Adelphia Cable, so that's their background is being service providers.
But Matrix itself has not ever been a regional ISP.
We've never had the need to be an ISP. Yeah, we've never had the need to be an ISP. We've always hidden it off. However, here, it's most cost effective to do it this way. However, you know, if the town wanted to have a different service provider, we could use building SLAs or, you know, whatever is part of the negotiation process. But to give you an idea as far as the pricing is concerned, the bottom line to the customers, they don't know who the internet is coming from, whether it's Level Free, whether it's AT&amp;T, whether it's Verizon. They just know if they're connected and if it's fast. Right? That's the big thing. All right? To give you an idea as far as some of the costs, the town of Leverett, when they first went out and did their presentation to the town, they told the townsfolk that voice and internet would cost about sixty-five dollars per user. All right? Then when they actually went out and they found out what the real cost would be, they said it was going to be eighty-eight dollars per user. Now it's ninety-five dollars per user. There's a forty-nine dollar MLP charge, which is their operating charge, and there's a forty dollar charge if you're doing voice and data. On top of that, we have to remember that there's, on average, a tax bill for each house in Leverett of about three hundred dollars. That's per house, based upon an average house of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in value. That works out twenty-five dollars per month. So when you add in those fees, you're looking at a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and eighteen dollars per month, which is going to be in the same range as what we're talking about. The big difference there is in this case, the only people paying that would be the people taking service. So the people who want taking service aren't paying all that extra.
But the town wants to do that.
But they're still paying. Yeah, and something else you go back to on the make ready work, whether the town builds the networks themselves, or whether Wired West builds it, or whether we build it, that make ready work has to be done. Right? And it's going to be the same costs. So it's not something that you'd be putting up to bid. It's something that you're basically improving the infrastructure of the poles in your own town. It's not something that's really helping us at all. It's something that's helping you.
If we're to put fiber on the pole.
If you put fiber on the pole.
We go wireless, we wouldn't incur that cost.
At some point, you would have some make ready, because in order to get to a service point to different poles, you'd be connecting those different poles via fiber. You could do microwave from one point to another point, but the, you know, I'm not the expert, Chris could be the expert on that. But in order to get to certain locations, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd most likely have to comply on them.
Ideally, you have a hybrid invention.
Yeah.
And that's a million dollars to move to, you said, or something?
Well, that's for the town of Princeton. And I think your cost would be less. And keep in mind that the extra two hundred thousand dollars they built in is pushing... We project, you know, we project a business of closer to eight hundred thousand. But you have to plan for the worst case scenario. And that's...
And you said they have a density of about twelve hundred homes?
Twelve hundred homes, eighty-two miles. Very nice, Pete. I want to say that forever. We would ask for the town to guarantee at least three hundred and seventy homes, which would be roughly a fifty percent take rate. If the number fell below that, we're not asking the town to pay for the subscription fees. We'd just be asking the town to help with the construction part of the bill, which would be about thirty dollars per home. However, we would not be making this offer. We didn't feel like, you know, that the number of people in towns wanting to take service is going to be about eighty percent take rate. And that's been our experience up in Vermont. It fluctuates between seventy-nine and eighty-one percent. So basically, eight out of ten houses down the road that we pass with fiber are taking service. Leverett, right now, is about eighty percent as far as the take rate is concerned, and they get to term service. So we feel very comfortable as far as like the take rate. And just something that gives us a bottom line. Okay, this is our area. So I guess when I said that we're asking...
You said that what you're saying is fifty percent.
Yeah. And also, I should point out that there's been a recent study by the Fiber Home Council that across the country, even in areas where there's overbuilding, where Comcast is overbuilding, Fios and so on, the average take rate in areas that have fiber is forty-seven percent. And, you know, I think in areas where there's no existing services, it'll be much higher.
We have DSL in the center of town, but you're saying if you feel confident that even in the village, that there would be take rates that would be high, or fifty percent?
Yes. What we'd like to do to help guarantee that for the town is we would offer basically two packages. Well, it would be three. The standard package, you'd be looking at just internet service. And that'd be about ninety-five dollars for probably fifty megabits. If you wanted internet plus phone, that'd be a hundred and fifteen dollars. And if you wanted an indoor O N T that has built-in Wi-Fi, I'll use gear from Calix. It's eight oh two eleven A C. One unit could basically provide wireless service for an entire house. You know, I think they tested it on five thousand and ten thousand square foot houses that were fine. There'd be an extra five dollar equipment charge for that. So the most the package would cost would be a hundred and twenty. But we're also thinking about providing an eighty dollar basic package, lifeline type package, that would be telephone and a five-megabit internet service. So for the people who are doing DSL today, I think if they look at their bill combined between the telephone and the DSL service itself, and all the taxes and fees that they have to pay, it's only about eighty-eight dollars. So instead of having something that will go off when it rains, either fiber, we'd actually have more bandwidth, you know, a better service. So we feel that the take rate on that would be, you know, not in substantial. You're not going to get everybody to switch over from DSL because once you have something in the house, it's much easier just to keep it. But for those folks, if they want to go from the one, two, or three megabits that they're getting on DSL to fifty, then it becomes very attractive.
And there's the hurdle of asking them to pay five hundred dollars.
Correct. Correct. But that same hurdle is also adding between five and one hundred thousand dollars of value to their house.
How slow... How close, so you are proposing here to what in actual we've laid out in Leverett?
Well, keep in mind, Leverett is a different model. They did a tax bond. So they basically did the tax bond. They went up to bid for the, well, they went up to bid for the design services first, which we didn't do. Then they hired a contractor to build it, which is us, and do the final design. So we're in the process right now of building the network. It should be lit up in the next couple of months. They ran into some delays because of the make ready work. First off, they delayed a month in giving us the pole inventory, which we could have done ourselves. So there was a month delay. And then the way that Verizon works is you need one individual check for every application that you send in. They sent in one check for all the applications. Verizon waited forty-four days. They had by law forty-five days to go back to the town and say, you need to send in all the applications. So there was, it was basically two and a half months delay built in there.
But the major distinction is they own their network.
They own their network.
We own it for twenty years.
Right. And but the other major distinction there, too, is the taxpayers are paying for that network.
Plus the ISP is fully open gas electric.
The network operator is fully open gas electric, and the service provider is Crocker Communications.
It's with...
Crocker Communications. So they're basically, they're going to own it, but they're pretty much a handoff operation. I think we covered some of this other stuff. Actually, I think we covered it all. So as far as the process is concerned, the reason I'm here tonight is to gauge your interest. If you're interested in having us build a network in your town, we'll continue the discussion. The next step would be a MLU, a numbering of understanding, basically outline, you know, we said we're going to do this, and you said you're going to do that. The next step after that is the town would have to secure the financing for the make ready, whether that's through MBI or whether that's through a town vote in the spring.
And you're saying that's going to be about a million dollars?
I would estimate it, yeah. Based upon, they have, they have different numbers that they seem to be operating on. I'll give you an example. Town of Alford, they have three hundred and fifty people, and they have about twenty-two miles of road. They're being asked to provide between six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollars in the Wired West plan. The town of Mount Washington has a hundred and sixty-six people, which is less than half of Alford, but they have the same amount of road miles. They too are asked to be providing either six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not sure how they're doing it. You know, some people say they're going to be doing it by population, which makes sense, because this is supposed to serve the twenty-eight thousand unserved households, not road miles. So if you did the numbers, you know, if you took the forty million dollars and divided it by the population, it should be about a million. If you do, you know, if you do it by road miles, again, it should be about a million. So either way, you really should be up to a million dollars, I think. And that's assuming that the money that might be due to you is not used for other things. So for example...
The money that's not due to us.
It's due as per the state.
It, well, maybe due is the wrong word, but if they say if there's forty-five towns other than one that are unserved, and there's forty million dollars for the last month, to me, that money's due to those forty-four towns.
I'm not so sure.
I'm not too sure.
Personally, I think that's a big assumption. Because I think the state has, if they want us to all go along with the state plan, there is a lot of incentive for them to say, we're not going to give you anything if you don't go with this, or we'll give you less than what you would get if you went with the Wired West plan. So to suggest that it would be evenly divided by a formula related to road mile to population seems...
Do you have a lot of...
You have a way of the state mastering this.
Yeah. And I'm actually, to back up, I'm actually not saying that. In the town of Princeton, where we're proposing this, we actually had them go through the town vote for this to make sure that if all comes to worse, they will be able to pay for this out of town money. Right? And the townsfolk, they spoke very loudly. They had the largest, not, it was a special town meeting, but the Monica people showed up for the special town meeting. It was bigger than any other town meeting it ever had in history to tell. And they voted ninety percent to vote to approve the fund.
For the make ready.
For the make ready. And I know you guys know that getting the folks in town to vote ninety percent on anything is almost unheard of. So that's how much the pent-up demand there is for fiber.
Pretty good in Nashville. We take a long time to get there. It's a time we do. We're pretty close to it.
And we beat it to death.
Oh, we would.
The minutes of the day.
Chris, I think, I think Chris understands how slow things work. And but also, you know, beating at some of these, I know how well we hate people. And they're very respectful of the business.
So let me ask a few questions before I... Just two. I don't understand a lot of the technical stuff, but I understand some of the high-flying stuff. I understand the make ready. You know, there's a bill there of one and maybe a couple hundred thousand for contingency. Maybe if we're lucky, we get funding, maybe we don't. After that, I understand that there's a revenue stream going to you by the people who put skin in the game of five hundred bucks or fifteen hundred bucks later. But where's the, since you're owning it, you're occurring the expense of the buildup beyond the make ready? Is that what you're saying? The other two to three million is going to come out of your five hundred or your fifteen hundred dollar fee plus your service fee from that point four?
Yeah.
And any shortfall that the town might owe you because you don't give your fifty percent subscription for the construction?
Yeah, and we don't, we don't feel like there's going to be a shortfall. And as a comparison point, and also to your original point, we make money on this on the long haul. Right? The first few years, we're not going to make any money, you know, because it's going to cost a lot to build the network. It's going to take us a while to recoup that investment. Our investment and our risk is based upon the faith that there's people in town that want the services and not pay for it. But to give you a comparison point...
I just wanted to understand that if the town's exposure with Wired West could be three to four million dollars with some money flowing back in from MBI, whereas with you, the exposure sounds like it's one point two plus a little jump change somewhere, you know, if you don't need your fifty percent.
Yeah, pretty much. Remember with Wired West, your exposure, first off, you'd have to authorize the bonding of two point two million to three point one million dollars. There was no guarantee that you're not going to be paying that entire amount. Right? There were, there was some, there was some figures shown by Jim Gerard that showed, all right, at forty percent, you guys are going to be paying the entire bill. At fifty percent, it's, you know, maybe half and half. Then at sixty-five percent, that's when they'd be able to pay back all the interest and the principal. Right? So what we're saying is, we're just asking for fifty percent. You know, if they feel sixty-five percent is a due number, we feel fifty percent. And it should also be pointed out that that sixty-five percent on the Wired West plan is based upon the entire network. So not just the take rate for your town, it's the entire take rate in all of town.
With all forty-four participating?
Or if it's ten or whoever. It's never going to be four.
Whatever they build.
Yeah. I think that's, that's a really interesting issue because we could have a hundred percent take rate and Plainfield could have a ten percent take rate, and we still wouldn't get our money back necessarily to pay off our bond unless the rules that we agreed on as a cooperative would change and somehow accommodate those interests. And I think one of the powerful characteristics of doing a cooperative approach is that we own it, we sit on this board, and we make the rules about the service cost, what money comes back to the town, and so on. At least we participate in this process. Whereas, not to say that this is a bad deal what we're proposing, but this is a private company that's saying, here's our proposal, and, you know, this is it, and then they run it for twenty years. And we basically step back. We're going to basically take their terms at this time.
Yeah. One of the concerns at first, watching, looking at, you know, was that first presentation that we saw, the show going down here. Who knows what we're going to learn this week? But I think it's going to be interesting to see how much real interest there is, how many people are really willing to commit, and how many of the different towns are really going to commit. Because that's, that's how it's going to be paid back. Whereas in critical mass, it's not a good deal for anyone.
Well, just to address a couple of things. One, as I mentioned earlier, I could see like thirty-one towns potentially participating in the plan. And of that thirty-one, I think a lot of the select ones are going to have one of three reactions to the number they're being asked to be financially responsible for. The first one, they're going to look at that number and say, well, if that's what you're going to be financially responsible for, why don't we just build it ourselves? It's basically, that's what we're saying. It's the class, you know, if we build it ourselves, we own it ourselves, we have more control of how soon we get put in. You know, whether it be two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, it could be two thousand and sixteen. You know, it's a matter of control and also timing. There's also the question as far as, you know, the people who look at the number and say, maybe the best thing to do is to step back. Like you guys are thinking, you know, just let's sit back and see what happens. And the third group of people will say, yes, let's go ahead with this. Right? The timeframes that they're being asked to accommodate are very aggressive. You know, most towns, you know, between, you know, March and June will have their town meeting. They don't have a number today that they can put on their warrant. And what they're being told is if you send in that letter of support to MBI, that MBI will help get that number for you. Right? They'll have an engineering survey done, They'll have an engineering survey done and they'll have a number that you'll be able to put on your warrant to feel comfortable, right? But it's supposed to be a non-binding letter or support that you're sending in. But if all of a sudden, if you send in that letter that triggers the engineering fee, uh, costs, that process to come out of somewhere. And they're probably gonna take it out of a bucket that might have been labeled "Ashby." So your amount of money available to you later on, if you decide to go a different path, it's probably gonna be reduced by that engineering fee. And quite honestly, I haven't had a lot of faith in the consulting or the engineering that MBI is gonna do it today. And then the second thing becomes, alright, if the town decides to put in a warrant, they bring it to town vote, they're gonna need a two-thirds majority in order to pass it. The first question that's gonna be asked, and you guys all know this, the person's gonna raise their hand and say, "Is this gonna raise my taxes?" And the answer's gonna be yes. And you're gonna have to give in the worst-case scenario, that person's gonna do the last two months. And the second person's gonna raise their hand and say, "Well, this timeframe is supposed to be between 2017 and 2019." "I'm trying to sell my house now. I can't wait that long." You know, we didn't, we, it has to be a better way. So they're gonna vote that. And then you have the person next to them saying, "I live in the center of town, I have DSL, I don't stream movies, I don't have kids, you know, I'm happy with what I have." So getting a two-thirds majority from even from the towns that say that they want it, it's gonna be a knockoff struggle. So, you know, the number of towns that are actually able to pass the two-thirds majority and then pass the two, uh, two and a half override, you know, will that be enough to be critical mass for Wired West? Would that be enough to make the, the, the plan viable? Because the information that they passed out said the first risk and the biggest risk is which towns and how many participate in the plan. And that's a question that nobody knows the answer to.
Wired West is a very candid and forthcoming, numerating and elaborating on the significant risks associated with what they propose. Let me invite you to be equally candid with your class. Lay it out candidly and straightforwardly, please.
Well, if you take a look at what we're asking the town to provide, as far as the make ready, like I said, that would be the same whether you did it for us, you built it yourself, or you did the Wired West plan. So that's, that's kind of looking non-risk. Would you agree with that, David? Have a look at everything?
I'm sure.
Okay. Second would be the telecom shelter, which would be something that the town would own. So if you're not gonna have fiber, the telecom shelter doesn't do you much good. So there's a risk that you're gonna have. There's also the, the police detail on. That's time that you won't get back. So potentially, you'd be able to, you know, you'd lose the funds for that, however your police will enjoy, you know, the old time. The second risk is as far as the, um, the take rate is concerned. 370, right? If the take rate is below 370, it's a problem, you know, somewhat. And the biggest risk would be is if it's zero. What's your maximum exposure? And if any of us had thought that the, the take rate would be zero in this town, nobody would be talking about this.
If the take rate was only gonna be 370, you'd never get the votes to begin with. The two-thirds votes to begin with.
That's true, that's very true. So if that's the biggest exposure, then the question is always asked, "What happens if Matrix goes out of business?" So what we do when we do the contract is we, we try to protect the town as best we can. So we'll take these assets and put them in a separate LLC. So that also, that makes it easier for us to transfer the assets at the end of 20 years and also protects you to, if something happens to us, that becomes a separate asset that, you know, on the finance committee, again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a accountant, but-
Could you try to elaborate on that a little more? Let me get a little fix on what you're talking about.
Well, um, I guess the answer to your original question is, the biggest risk to the town is even if we want to lay the fiber, we'd still be there. And there'd be somebody that would wanna use that fiber to provide services.
But we wouldn't know it, and you'd be, you let a bankrupt, you'd credit you on that, right?
That's correct. And if, and quite honestly, if the company would bankrupt, my biggest concern would not be Ashby, it would be my job.
But our concern is-
It would be Ashby, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. But nobody, you know, nobody goes into a venture like this thinking that we're gonna go out of business.
How long has Matrix been in business?
We've been in business, uh, close to 20 years.
What if, what if, um, we're not happy with the service in some way? We don't have, it's like a, we don't have, as a customer, we've got no choice, right?
Well, as a town, you look at it. So remember, there's basically the three things. We're, we're putting in industry-standard equipment, we're putting in, we, we use Corning, which everybody knows as far as fiber's concerned, or Corning equals as far as the fiber's concerned. We use Calix exclusively as far as the gear is concerned. Calix is by far the number one brand of access, fiber access gear in the country, actually in the world. And it's, it can be used basically no matter who provides services. So you have the construction costs, which should be, you know, spread out over 20 years. You have the maintenance costs, which would be spread out on a month-by-month basis. But then the third part, the part that you're talking about, the services, there could be SLAs or service-level agreements built into our agreement with the town so that if we're not needing the customer service, that the town would have the option to find a new service provider. So our, you know, we wanna build the network, we wanna, we wanna have the control over the network to make sure that we're getting the take rates that are necessary to make it a success. We don't wanna hand that off to a third party and have them be responsible for.
In your package here, is there a list of communities that you've worked in with people that we can call for references?
Yeah, well, in the package, actually, I don't have that in the package. But you have EC Fiber there, there's a collection of 24 towns up in Vermont. Very simple geography. Stan lives in the head up there. I'd be happy to arrange a trip, or if you wanna set up a conference call with Stan and talk to him about the experiences he's had with us. Stan Woss, who is a member of the select board in Princeton and also on the drive-in committee, has volunteered to come out and talk with the select board if you want to hear from him about his experiences with us. I can also give you, you know, contacts from Rutgers University, all the different people that we tell her.
Well, you have some experience, level of experience, right, but-
Yeah. Do you wanna talk to Stan Woss, the project manager? Do you have any sort of call him?
Ted? Do you have your hand up?
I did. I was gonna ask that in particular along the lines of this particular one, I think, for- I was trying to figure out, which is the best community you can think of that's parallel to our situation? You've mentioned Leverett, you've mentioned Princeton, you've mentioned this Vermont consortium. And I'm not quite clear, is there one of these that would stand out as the most, uh, parallel to our circumstances, do you think, or not?
I would say Princeton is probably the most similar. They're a little bit larger as far as population is concerned, yet very similar as far as size is concerned.
And Leverett?
Leverett is very condensed. You know, they, they have 39 miles of road, but more, they got over 800 homes. So they have the same population as you have, a little bit more, and half the states.
And what's Matrix's role in Leverett? I'm unclear about that.
Leverett, in Massachusetts, you have a separate design and build, right? So they hired a company called G4S to do the original design. Then they hired us to do the build and the final design, or the ASBILs, right? So that's what we're doing, we're building up the network for Leverett. And then we're gonna do the final design based upon what was built.
But I went on the website of Leverett, I never saw Matrix identified as Millennium. Who said, were they-
Okay, that's, that's the confusion. Our company actually has two separate sister companies. One is Matrix Design Group, which is the engineering firm. And then there's Millennium Communications that does the installation, the electronics, right? So they're sister companies, same ownership. We find it's easier to, instead, we first started talking about Matrix and Millennium because it was confusing people. So it was just easier to go with one single company, same company. All your agreements with the town would be through Matrix Design Group instead of Matrix Millennium. Because then you have to explain the, you know, the, uh, the program.
How many homes in Princeton?
Princeton has 1,200 before you, Alex. Anaskey area. Watch your phone.
So I just learned, I, I listened to Chris give an argument about how it seems risky for the town to get involved with the regional approach. And I wanna sort of spin that around a bit. And I'm not sure I'm totally behind this argument. I wanna think a little bit about the opposite argument, which is, does it make sense for us to pursue the regional approach in a non-binding agreement which doesn't tie us down with something? To, in a good faith effort, to see if that makes sense for the, for the town. And if it does not, then we figure out, well, maybe there are other solutions such as doing building it ourselves. But if we are to pull out now before we've fully explored the Wired West option, then we're undermining the, just like all the other towns, they're undermining the potential of that group approach because they wouldn't have the critical mass. So it seems to me that it was, not to say that, that there is some obvious reasons for us to pull out of not participating, that we shouldn't do it. But at this point, I see a situation in which we've got more certainty of, uh, contribution from the state, and we've got a regional effort in the sense of the $40 million that they've committed to this. And we have sort of the, the, we'll be something that we would own collectively and it would be, uh, we would be leveraging the expertise and the political strength and so on of a larger regional effort instead of feeling the, all of the pressures of us having to do a lot of this ourselves. So I'm hesitant to want to, I, I would be very hesitant. I would be discouraged, I would want to discourage the select board from going with Matrix. And I would encourage us at this point to agree to this agreement and see how things progress, knowing that it's a contract.
If I, if I may. I'm not asking people to say, "Okay, we're gonna go with this plan," I'm just presenting an option for the town. The second thing we wanna point out is that if you wanted to wait and see, say, how the build went in Princeton, we expect to be having people lit up by next December, right? So it would basically be waiting a year. If you went ahead with, with the Wired West plan, what they're asking for is the non-binding letter of support. But that letter of support is, is some catches to it. One, if it does trigger, trigger the, uh, the engineering fee, the necessary money will come to take it out of your, your, uh. The second thing is, it's also giving Wired West the okay to do a mailing in January, asking for the $50, you know, credit card debit that they will, you know, do. What that's gonna do is probably gonna confuse your voters. So they're gonna think, "Well, I'm, I'm being asked to give $50, so I guess there's a network being built," right? It's gonna explain to them that you need to have 40% take rate before they build it, right? But you haven't built, you haven't agreed to do that, you haven't passed the two-thirds resolution, you haven't even agreed to put it on the town warrant. But what it's doing is taking you down one more step to a binding resolution, to being tied to this particular plan, you know?
I disagree with what you're saying. I think, I don't think the voters would be confused if they put up $50 in January. Ultimately, our town decided not to participate, fell through, their money is in Ashby. They get their money back and then we go to Plan B.
Yes, yeah, I, I think it would confuse people.
I, I think we get a lot more information to gather and I think that'll be really important on Wednesday to, to gather that information. But what, what I'm getting out of this tonight is that if the town was to do something similar to what you're proposing, our risk or our presentation, or financially, what would be responsible would be about a million dollars. Compared to 2.6.
No, actually, more compared to 3.4.
2.6 is about halfway between, uh, what-
But again, that's just the cost for the bill. It doesn't include the cost for the make ready, does it include the cost for the police details? Does it include the cost for the project manager? Does it-
I'm not so sure about that.
No, I know, I know.
Well, let's just say, let's say it's a million and three.
A million versus three?
It's a three.
Well, actually, actually, just to address this for David.
Yeah.
The, the upper limit that they're, you're being asked for through Wired West, again, that was done by a consultant that said this would be, they said 3.1 million dollars after the grant. So you would have to add the grant on top of that 3.1 million, which would get you close to $4 million, but it's a state of it. So it would be about $4 million, that cost would occur.
So, so, yeah, I mean, in my, from this presentation, I'm not too far off. And I think there, there's the good and the bad and then what's realistic. And so people are gonna tell us in town, as it hits the press and so forth, and, you know, this is getting pretty widely talked about, is what's gonna sell. I have no doubt that it's a value. It's a value to everybody in town. It's just getting them to pay for it, who is the deal? I mean, one of the things that goes on, and I have, there's few that know less than I do about how all the mechanics of all of this works. I mean, I'm getting a great education and I'm still only gonna fill a damn small temple. But what I'm wondering is, that if this gets so expensive, I mean, would all of a sudden people say, "Well, man, maybe we should build a few towers so we can have wireless to everywhere."
These towers are not looking so bad anymore.
Right? I mean-
Let's put something on the steeple.
Yeah, I, and this is-
I feel like I'm not gonna say that.
You haven't been here on any of these tower meetings.
I actually have, I have.
Tom? I'm not talking about the steeple, I'm talking about if they wanna put up a cell tower. Oh my God, you think we were shooting rockets?
Well, if I could just address one other thing that I think we kind of skipped over is the idea of, you have to remember the makeup of, of Wired West's membership. Today, you have 44 towns. Of that number, 31 are included with the unserved towns and there's another 13 towns that are cable towns like Conway, Shelburne, and so on, right? There's other towns that aren't neither, but they're members and they're voting members, right? So your vote is spread out among 44. So you might really wanna have something in town, or you might be really unhappy with the service you're getting, but you're only one of 44. When you're dealing with us, it'd be on a one-to-one basis. So I think there's actually a more, I, I know you disagree, but what I'm saying is, they say that they're gonna run it as a business, but it's gonna be a bureaucracy running as a business.
Tom, when you're talking about SLAs, is open access an option?
We are not a big believer in open access. The more choices that you have, the less attractive it makes it to the individual service providers. You're better off having one service provider providing everything. It could, because again, the, the phone is gonna be unlimited local calling and unlimited one-business calling in the 48 lower US states, and then beyond that, we have the call line. That's gonna be the safer route. The internet access, you basically, you're looking at how fast you're going on the, on the internet and whether things are slow and whether there's, you know, any limits and things like that. Other than that, just, you know, for a town like this, you're not asking for a lot of bills and taxes.
Why is open access-
Why is open access bad? Seems like a lot of other industrialized countries are going that way.
Other European countries.
South Korea.
It does not work in the United States.
Yeah.
They tried, they tried it up in, in New Hampshire, there's been a lot of issues. And I could bring in the manufacturers to talk about it.
I'm just trying to understand why.
Because when you, you're fighting over the same cost of the rest.
Yes, exactly.
But you're not offering any better services.
Right, lower prices.
If that's something you guys really want, then we have to be prepared to pay it. Because again, you know, we don't want it to be a situation where there's so few customers that you're not getting the proper customer service or they don't care about the turn rate at that point.
And I, I think some of the issue, yeah, is if there's 10 different companies and they only got a small number of people, then they're not able to make a good business in the Ashby.
Right.
But on the other hand, if you're stuck with a monopoly that, that in 10 years is still, you know, you're only getting a 50 megabit package and everybody else in the world is getting a hundred, but, you know, we have no choice because-
Which is kind of a lot of us are living now.
Right, it's just kind of a little rise.
And again, as a point of comparison, Wired West model of not open access network either. Brian, do you make ready on this?
I was just gonna say, this has been really interesting, I thought, and, and a lot to digest. And I'm thinking in, in respect to you, David, but it seems like we needed to have a discussion in the, in the committee. in the, in the committee on this. Just maybe not get too much into the pros and cons they're arguing about it here. I think we got more, we got more information to collect on the Wired West side, too.
You mentioned this, this group vote, is it twenty-four towns up in Vermont consortium you work with?
Yes.
Would you not do the same thing here with the NBI Wired West collectivity, or what, thirty-one towns? What, what would your role be in that, if any?
Well.
Why do you come to us as a town instead of kind of pitching something that you might provide the way construction, design services for the consortium and so on?
Well, the thing you have to understand as far as the makeup of EC Fiber up in Vermont, they're the, they're the consortium of the twenty-four towns. They basically self-funded the construction. They were not, individual investors from, from the towns. People said, I want fiber down my street. So there was an initial group of people who put up the money. I believe they are paying seven percent interest on their bonds, or just a little under seven percent. So it's basically, it's, it was self-funded. And Matrix and Millennium basically invested in that as well. We're, we're not only a company that's building, we're also an investor in EC Fiber. So that was a self-funded model, where, you know, the people in the towns got together and said, all right, here's the money, let's go ahead and build, instead of doing a task bar. So it was different than the Leverett model. And the Princeton model that we came up with, where, all right, you know, this is going to be a partnership. You guys provide the make-ready, we'll provide the network, and we'll work together. So that's a new, separate, different model. It's just a different way to help finance it and getting it done.
Can I ask you about that? So when you say it was self-funded, these towns in Vermont, I actually was in Vermont this weekend using EC Fiber.
Which town?
Stratter.
Okay.
I upgraded to year seven, which is a five gigabyte download.
Yep.
Fifteen minutes. Anyway. Sorry, come on. How, when they raised a bond to do that?
No.
What do you, so like, people just took out their checkbooks?
Yeah.
Everybody in the town, or just the people who wanted it on the road?
They have different levels of investment. And it basically act, you know, I don't know the whole financial model, but basically, it was similar to like getting a CD at the bank. You, you invested at a certain level, you did a certain return on that investment, you know, either immediately or, or after twelve months. But I believe it's just under seven percent as far as the return on it. It, it's actually a pretty good investment model. Are you, would you consider that in this area? If you have people who want to set up, this one guy up there, Stan Williams is.
Probably would be seven percent tax-free.
I, I think it is, actually is, what they have set up. But again, Stan Williams is the head up there. If you want to talk to him as far as the financial law, you'd be more than happy to do it. We're, we're, we're trying to come up with something. EC and E, there's different towns, and we're just trying to help fill that space.
Place to go, right?
Does that make sense? I, I, like I said, I'm more than happy to put them in touch with Stan.
Stan Williams?
Stan Williams.
Is he helping the town?
He's at EC Fiber, he's the head of EC Fiber.
The, the cost of the proposal at Wired West has tendered, and we're reacting to it as well. Luckily, to constructing a net base in terms of tax impact, for us to be building somewhere between two or three new Sanderson academies based on our construction costs of fifteen, twenty years ago. So it's a very sizable outlay. Given that, I'm inclined to think it makes sense for us to keep our options open. So to that end, I'm, I'm delighted that you came here tonight. But I want to ask you a direct question, and I hope it gives us a candid answer. You're obviously not going to be taking your dog and pony show out to the forty-four towns. You did decide consciously a week or two ago at a select board meeting you'd come here and asked to put on the agenda. So I want to amplify Ted's question here, why did you come to us?
A couple of different reasons. We're privately owned company, which gives us some latitude. There's some towns I wouldn't want to deal with, just because of the personalities in town, you know, they're just difficult. I've been to a number of meetings here, and actually, one of the guys who's, one of our project managers in Leverett was here during the NBI installation, Curtis Goodman, I'm not sure if any of you guys know him. But he came away very impressed with, with the town and the people in the town. So we want to work for a town or work with a town where we like the personalities, we feel like we're, we're doing the public good. Also, the town has the right population density that would make it work for us.
So how do you, you know, let's cut to the quick on this. How, how did you ascertain that we are sweet, loving individuals? Have you not read the papers or what?
Yeah, really.
I've, I've been to the meetings that have been, some of these have been called contentious, and I didn't find them contentious at all. I thought they were well-mannered, I thought everybody respected other people's opinions. They might have held fast to their opinions, but they, at the same time, they were respectful. They, they, you know, there was no shouting down of other people, just, just in general, just.
So you, you believe this, you, you chose us in part because you feel we're wonderful folks, chosen.
I feel that we could work. And honestly, I, I came to the other meeting prepared, if you guys said that you're going to go forward with the Wired West plan, I would just say, okay, I'm just here to observe. But when you said that you're not sure, you're going to sit back and wait, I said, well, you know what? There's another option for the town. I didn't, I don't want to impede on Wired West. David probably knows that over the past two years, I've been to almost all the executive committee meetings, I've been to all the, all the board meetings. I, and I see a need for fiber in these towns. I, I also have to be honest with you that over the past twelve months, Wired West seems to have transformed itself from a company or an organization that was geared to bring broadband to the unserved towns and communities in western Mass, to an organization that wants to own and operate a giant network. And I don't think the change in the organization has been for the better.
Okay. Chris, we are going to a FERC meeting on Wednesday.
Yes.
And so if I'm talking to some of my brethren, sisters, and so forth, as the other towns, and I say, hey, we met a pretty neat guy, Chris, are they going to say they met him too?
A couple of towns.
Yeah.
And I'm more than happy to tell you the towns that we're talking to.
Yeah.
We, we've been talking to Mount Washington for close to two years. On Washington. I didn't mean to say it that way. There's a, but the thing is, they, they a long time ago decided that they want to go. Town of Alford is also technically a member of Wired West, but they want to build their own network.
Mount Washington, that's where the governor's house is, huh?
No, no.
Is it Richmond?
Yeah, well, they pressed me with the, with the governor, he actually had fiber installed in his own house. So he knows what's entailed, he was getting fiber.
Any other neighboring towns?
Uh, I've, a long time ago, I talked to Shelburne and Buckland, and also Conway as far as, like, helping them out as far as the, you know, they're unserved. But there's certain, you know, areas in town that Comcast might not want to get to or may not be able to get to. Because with Comcast, the, the cable company cannot go outside of the town because it's a tomby-town franchise agreement. So in that actuality, you know, by being here, we might be able to help out, you know, both Buckland and Conway and some of those neighborhoods as well. So not just the folks in, in Ashville, other people might be able to help.
I have one more question if I can ask you. Make-ready poles, here we go. Spend a bunch of money on make-ready poles, and we don't own the poles, we don't own the asset. Do we own, do we reserve space? Is there something that says if we make ready and, and trip with your company or Wired West, at that point, we spent that money, are they obliged to meet our needs for a period of five years? Leave that space available for us, or are they going to say, see you, we're moving on?
Yeah, it's not as long as five years, but there is a period of time where that space has been cleared for you.
Okay, for fiber.
For fiber. And, and like I said, if you decided, you know what, we're going to build it ourselves. That would be, you know, your space.
Good, and we pay right now.
Yeah, it's not free lunch, but when it comes to utility companies.
Thank you. Any quick questions or comments or anything?
I kind of want to mention something about the make-ready. There's a significant variable associated where the application process is them to go out and look at the poles. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. But then if, for example, a pole needs to be replaced, that's your cost, the applicant's cost. If there has to be a certain amount of space between the power and the communications area, because the new guy goes on top. So if there's not the correct amount of space, all those other wires have to be moved down. That's the applicant's cost. So some of these poles, you can go look at them, and they're good poles, there's plenty of space, there's no additional cost. Other poles, you look at them, and a ton of stuff needs to be moved. That's part of why the make-ready is so, has such a big varying associated with it, because nobody knows yet how many of the poles need something to be done.
I thought Wired West did all that survey and spent all that time looking at that.
They surveyed all of the pole positions, but they haven't done any assessments of the conditions of the poles.
Right, I was at the meeting in Salem, and they spoke about that.
And a couple, a couple things to go along with.
So the ten thousand dollars is the application?
It's just like, yeah, just to apply, to go for the application.
Well, MECO.
Okay.
So that's ten thousand dollars to apply on just two hundred poles?
On two hundred poles, every two hundred poles would be ten thousand dollars.
So it'll be a hundred thousand dollars by the time we get there.
That's the bad news. The good news is MECO is actually very good to work with, they're very reasonable.
They are, yeah.
For ten thousand.
They're a lot better than Verizon.
To kind of go along with what Chris was saying, the town of Leverett, they had a total of ten applications, right? So, and I think, you know, that's, they're, they're MECO as well, with only like one part of town that's served by National Grid. So there was like nine applications with MECO, one application with National Grid. Both electric companies are very good to work with, as well as Verizon. Verizon, the people who we're dealing with in their offices and in the field were, have been great. But the total cost for the make-ready for them was four hundred thousand dollars. And they have like half the road miles that you'd have here. So that, that's another guidepost for you. But the thing, the thing to keep in mind is where they had to pay the most money was actually where NBI shipped their fiber. Because NBI put their fiber right in the middle of the space that should have been used by the town as well. So they had to move all the fiber from that ship.
How, how many poles are there in Ashville? Does anybody know? All of them.
Well, this is eighty-two, eighty-four road miles, I believe, but not every road will have poles on it, so it's tough to tell.
I think it's twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred?
Approximately.
Yeah, it, it's normally like two hundred, uh, two hundred feet per pole that helps.
So I wasn't too far off, two thousand dollars.
Actually, probably more than that.
Some of those, some of those poles probably go through the woods.
They do on my street.
I think you'd be looking at close to a hundred eighty thousand dollars as far as MECO applications and the keys. But like I said, they're, they're good to work with. And I'm sorry, I, I made the impression that like I do pay for the application, there's a lot of work. Yeah, as Chris was right, not putting out.
All right, anything, anything else for tonight? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
My level of knowledge is quadruple.
Thank you, Chris. The one thing I'd say is, uh, I'm, in the packets, there's a business card, there's a, a New Jersey number. I never answer that, so there's a cell phone number, the five oh number, if you need to get a bunch of me, you can send me an email or call the five oh, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I'll try for the roads.
Anything else that we need to take up tonight? Is there a motion to a petition? Any other discussion, I'm seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right, the technology committee, is there a motion to?
You don't want to talk amongst yourselves?
We could. Do you want to?
Tonight is young.
It's true. Good idea.
We could adjourn to the meeting.
You want to excuse us, that's Jordan of Technology.
Can we invite this for five minutes?